Good evening. We now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees to order. It is Tuesday, October 19th. We are at the Administration Building at 6:30. And are we going to leave the play?
Yes.
Okay. And well, it's now time for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, we get to start tonight with some little people, which is always exciting for us. And I'm going to have Kelly Flum introduce them.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. It's hard to believe that this is year four going into our Title I preschool classroom. In the last four years, we have started with two rooms. We're now at four Title I preschool classrooms and two developmental preschool classrooms in addition to our six Head Start rooms that we frequently talk about. So I'm excited to share with you a little bit tonight, our Title preschool and developmental preschool. And I have some very special guests here tonight. I have some teachers and some littles who enforce its preschools, so potty breaks are a thing. But first, I'd like to thank you Sadie for coming. Sadie, can you wave to everybody?
Sadie.
Hi Sadie. And then I have Holden and Wade Siggers coming on in. Voice, can you say hi to everybody?
Hi.
Hi. You can come up here with me.
She's mine.
I was going to say with Mom. It's okay. Okay. Watch your head. Watch your head on the corner. You can't stand right on it. You have to stand right next to it. There's nothing. And then I also have Tariah. Hi, teachers. I have Ms. Amanda Cranfield in the back, Ms. Kristen France, and Ms. Vanessa Willis. So before the teachers get started on the presentation they put together, I just want to introduce the children to you and have them tell you a little bit about preschool. And we'll see what kind of answers.
Definitely no problem.
Box says no promises. So Sadie, do you want to tell everybody what your favorite part of preschool is? What's your favorite part?
Uh... The seesaw.
The seesaw.
Wow.
Hmm... I can bend like a chair.
You can bend like a chair. Yes. What's your favorite part of your preschool classroom?
What, what kind of toys?
The toys. Who's your teacher? Is she here tonight? No, what's her name?
Mrs. Willis.
What does she teach you? Does she teach you anything?
Hmm...
What's your favorite part? Do you have a favorite part?
I don't know.
You don't know? That's okay to not know. We can just use our brains to think about it. Maybe we can talk about it at school tomorrow. Does that sound like a good idea?
Why don't you tell mommy earlier?
What's your favorite part of school? The haunted house. Ms. Vanessa is really creative, and so when you walk into her room, it looks like you're walking into a haunted house right now. So... Thank you for sharing with us. Sit back down with mom. And parents, thank you for bringing your children tonight. I have a quick fact for you. You're welcome to sit through the teacher's presentation, or you can take the picture out. You can take the empty, if you want to come on up. And I will let them take over, and I appreciate them putting this together. Hello.
So the first one we have here, we just have a quote, "That a school needs to be a place for all children, not based on the idea that they are all the same, but that they are all different." This is one of my favorite philosophers. We just wanted to talk kind of tonight how although the school as a whole, we have some common goals, such as like kindergarten readiness, but yet when you walk into the classroom, we all achieve that in a different way. So we'll kind of talk a little bit about some similarities, and then we are going to present our own slides with our curriculum of Highscope. We all follow that, but then we'll get into how we use it differently. So in the beginning, as a whole, the whole building is trying to just spend the first couple of weeks building relationships with children, and we do that through play. So there's just some pictures there that represent that. I was swinging on some swings with some children. I think Ms. Vanessa has some in the gym. Of course, I'm up there with bugs. Oh, can I go back? Is there a way back?
I didn't know how to go back.
I was just, Mr. Sean was up there on Pinterest. He's going to love it.
Mr. Sean's in our slides.
Mr. Sean. And then this is just, we also spend time practicing our commitments, routine, procedures. So not only with the building procedures, we're doing classroom procedures to set a routine for that security and safety. So we all do that. So here's my classroom family. So with Highscope, we each manipulate the curriculum in a way that molds with our teaching style and with our children, how they learn, so that they can be more successful. So with the Highscope, I use it as a student-centered learning experience, which means it's based on the children's interest. So what they want to learn, that's what we go with. For example, in the bottom row, pictures there, you'll see a Barbie. She has a paper dress on. The girls decided they did not want to use the clothes I had. They wanted to make clothes. So they started with paper, and then the next picture is Kylie in my art center, just with a bunch of random stuff on the table that she went and picked out, and she started to make it out of some fabric. So then I got up more fabric, and then we have Myla, who created her own shirt there in the art center, and some others helped her, which turned into the little boy in the next slide. They wanted to know how to sew clothes. So then we started practicing sewing. So that's what he is doing. He has a plastic needle and some yarn, and we're talking about how we go in and out. We could go around to make a stitch and things like that. Now, it's a self-guided approach, so these projects can last anywhere from like a week to weeks to months. So for example, that whole sewing project lasted, I would say, for a couple of months, but then Myla ended up moving on to kindergarten, and after she left, that project kind of died down because she was the head of that project. So that's an example of that. It may be a project that three kids are into, and I continue that with them in small groups, or they can continue with it at free learning time, but I don't, it doesn't, we don't leave it until they are done with it. I use experimental learning. So the box, you'll see Xander on top of a box at a cardboard center, and he was creating there, and he has like a hole puncher that's actually made for, to create cardboard projects. And so they got to experiment what they do if they connect to different objects. In the next picture, Olivia was, and this goes along with my relationship-driven, so this is an example for both. She, there's two huge boxes there. She decided she wanted one of the two huge boxes for herself, did not want to share them. So she was trying to stack one on top of the other. It became very difficult after a few minutes, and she could not get it. So then we decided we do want help, and we went to ask other people if they would help. So then many people were excited to help. They came and helped, and then they all wanted in. So they all went in. Let's give it a try. They all went in. There wasn't enough room. So they all came out, decided four people was enough, went again, decided that was not enough room to do what they wanted. They came back out. She made that blue sign there with three little people. She drew three people, and she said, "Can you write the number three? Three's enough." So we did, and then they knew when they came over, she made an announcement when they came over, three was enough, and we would take turns with three people. And then just with the self-guided approach, we have Aliyah at the top looking at worms. That's when we were talking about bugs and worms. Easton in the next picture, he's planting at a planting center. For Mother's Day, we planted flowers, so then they wanted to know how to plant more. Then we have Gunley with guitar. Next to him is the whole band that I had set up in the classroom because they wanted to know about music from our Christmas program led into that, so then we had a band. And Orin has the toothpicks and the gum drops when they were trying to figure out how to build different structures, and that came from the magnet tiles. So that's my classroom. So that's amazing. Wow.
All right. Next is my classroom. We also do the Highscope curriculum as our foundation, but as a developmental classroom, we have ages three to five and very different learning and where they're coming from, where they come in. We have higher level kids and lower level, and they all learn from each other in my classroom. So we do a lot of social-emotional aspects of it and kind of practicing those basic self-care techniques, and we're also very hands-on. So anything we do, we're hands-on. They learn a lot through play, and we also do a lot of the self-guided approach. And at the beginning of the year this year, which I didn't do last year, I had a child come in, and she said she wanted to have specials because she learned that her older sibling in school had specials. So we've talked about it, and we've now come to fill each day with a special. So on Monday, we do music. So we have Music Mondays. We learn a new song. We sometimes get our instruments out and do that. On Tuesday, we do Technology Tuesdays because we got a hand-me-down hatchboard from one of the Head Start classes, so we use that on Tuesdays. On Wednesday, we do art. So we kind of do a, they lead what kind of art they want to do, whether it's painting or using clay or anything like that. On Thursday is our library. We have a whole STEM setup in there, so we get to go in there for 30 minutes and kind of rotate around. And then on Friday is their absolute favorite, and it is hands-on. It is our Scientific Experiment Friday, so we do a lot of messy things, which is their favorite. We do things from making slime to exploding out of pop bottles and everything. So it's very fun for them, and my classroom is just very hands-on and stuff. And they learn a lot from each other.
Hello. I'm also a developmental teacher, so we also have a wide range of kids in our classroom. We also follow the Highscope curriculum, which is our play-based active learning curriculum. That just means that, you know, we're not just teaching from the sidelines. We're down in the play with the kids. We're asking open-ended questions. We're modeling for them. We're letting them explore the materials in different ways so that they have a variety... I mean, you can take a magnet tile, but we've made it into barns, homes, skyscrapers, you name it, we've built it. We have a very language-rich environment. We try to promote conversation, and we talk about everything. If they want to talk about it, we talk about it. If they want to learn about it, we try to take the time to learn about that. We just had a little one the other day wanted to learn about rhinoceroses in the middle of pumpkins, so we took a break, and we learned about rhinoceroses. And they love that. I try to focus on some life skills in my classroom. We want to make sure that the kids are self-reliant and that they have some of those daily living skills and hygiene skills for themselves. We do a little non-cooking cooking, you know, things that they can make at home with some of the things they have around. We made some pumpkin parfaits and stuff like that, and we joined our pumpkin unit, and we learned that preschoolers love pumpkin seeds more than they like pumpkin pie, which I was shocked about, but we had the taste test, and they love the pumpkin seeds. We're very relationship-focused in my classroom. I want to teach the kids to not just love each other, but to love themselves. So we did a little unit on what we like most about ourselves, and they got to take a picture of that and tell me why they love that. And then social-emotional learning, of course. We use the conscious discipline approach. So, you know, we just want the kids to recognize their emotions, why they're having them. We want to get on their level with them when they're in an emotional state and try to work that out. You know, awareness of why they're feeling a certain way, and then we help them through that. Okay?
I just want to clarify. I did bring up kindergarten readiness, and a lot of people think like numbers, shapes, colors, and that is all. We incorporate that all in here, because I know none of us said anything about that. So we do incorporate that, but why we, none of us said anything about that? Because with us, it's more about the social-emotional and the relationships, because we want them to be successful in kindergarten. So that is first of all, we have to accomplish, is the problem-solving with each other and together, compromises, the independent skills, the life skills, the communication, the language. So I just want to clarify that. I've had a lot of questions about that recently, so I just want to make sure we are doing that, but this is what is most important with us.
Completely agree with everything they said. Again, by the board and, you know, Central Office giving us the opportunity to open our Title I preschool classrooms. In addition to our existing Head Start classrooms, we have such an abundance of children in Fayette County that we're serving, so many that we're able to have those typical peers in our developmental preschool classrooms. And I feel like this is one of our strongest years with the typical peers we have in our developmental, because we know when we send kids on to kindergarten, it's all kids in the same pot. So we're thankful for the opportunity to continue serving all the kids in Fayette County, and if, you know, if anybody that needs a spot, we can find one for them.
Do you currently have a waiting list?
We were able to fill our waiting list, opening the fourth classroom this year. So we have stragglers come in all the time enrolling. Couple leave in last week, so...
What's your current enrollment?
We're about two... By January, we'll be about 272. We have some where Head Start started in January, so we're a full house. Thank you. We've done well.
Yes.
So again, the teachers make the magic happen, so it's all them. Appreciate them. Thank you for your time.
We thank you guys.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kelly or the team before you guys get ready? This is a great program. If you ever want to go check it out, let us know.
Yeah, you're welcome to come visit at any time. So I know Ann's been in for policy council and has seen the building, but anyone is welcome.
It's a blast to see them doing all their stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
She has her goody bag.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I think they want to get pictures.
I don't think they're going anywhere because they knew she had the goody bag.
Oh, that's true.
That little girl was like, "No, Mom, don't leave us."
Okay. Now back to business. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the agenda submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thanks, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public comments on agenda items, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of 9:14:21 and the special board meeting of 10:05:21. The personnel report, which includes retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of the September 2021 claims, number 60089 to 60396. The disposal of surplus technology. And donation, a donation of $500 in Walmart gift cards from Children's Bureau Connerville Office to the Spartan Closet to be used to purchase shelving, clothing racks, hangers, packs of new underwear and socks, and hygiene products. A donation of $1,000 from the Indiana High School Athletic Association to CHS General Scholarship Fund in the name of Evan Schaefer. And a donation of $4,340 from the Fayette County Foundation to CHS to be used to purchase a new set of uneven bars for the gymnastics team. So seeing the consent agenda, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion?
This is fantastic. All the donations we've gotten. Absolutely. That's great.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go back to the action items and personnel report, Mr. Harris.
On the personnel report this evening, recommendations we have for employment. Brandy Abercrombie as a bus driver. Floyd Apsher as custodian at the high school. Macon Coram as a permanent substitute at Grandview. Haley Davidson for developmental pre-K education assistant at Little Spartan. Recommend Adam Dunaway as a bus driver. Kathy Duncan as a bus driver. Peggy Fox as a special ed assistant for Eastview. Ashley Friend as a school social worker. Mina Hedrick as a temporary student success coach at Fayette Central. Haley Jones, student success coach at Eastview. Kimberly Lake is an educational assistant at Frey-Z. Megan Orr for developmental pre-K assistant at Little Spartan Preschool. Eldery Root as special education assistant at Frey-Z. And Meredith Watkins as an educational assistant at Eastview. Then for extracurricular, recommending Zach Henderson as the eighth-grade boys' light basketball coach at the middle school.
Thank you for that. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel report?
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second? Thanks, Jeremy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we have a series of resolutions, and we have to vote on each of these separately. So I'm going to go ahead and let Randy get started on this process.
Okay, and I just want to remind everybody, hopefully now, and remind you afterwards, this is the whole budget process. We had a hearing two weeks ago, and then this is really the conclusion to adopt our budget for the 2022 school year. And after the board meeting, there's going to be lots of signatures and all of that, hopefully, if we approve all these. So the first resolution is I'm seeking approval for the appropriations and tax rates as they were advertised for the rainy day fund, debt service fund, education fund, and the operations fund. And you have a copy of those as well as they are on our website.
Okay. I would like to seek a motion to approve the resolution for the appropriations and tax rates. Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll look at the approval of resolution to adopt the capital projects fund for 2022.
Okay, the next one, we discussed and had the capital projects plan submitted, and I am recommending approval of the resolution for the capital projects plan for 2022, and then it even goes into 2025 as a three-year plan.
Okay. I'd like to seek that approval for the resolution to adopt the capital projects fund plan.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Say it.
Thanks, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to the bus replacement plan adoption.
This one, resolution to adopt the best replacement plan as presented. If you remember, that was a five-year plan that we have somewhere between seven and four buses. It varies from year to year depending on the age of the buses and the mileage and those kind of things, but I would recommend approval of the resolution for the bus replacement plan.
Hearing that, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the bus replacement plan.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. The next one, Mr. Harris, the transfer amounts of education fund.
This is one that when we started the, when the separate funds were created, the change back in 2019, I believe, this is one that allows transfer of funds between education fund into the operations fund, into the rainy day fund. It can go multiple ways, and we can do that, but we have found that it works pretty well for us. If we transfer 15% of the education funds into the operations fund, that assists in making a part of the loss that we have due to the circuit breaker losses. But I am recommending that we continue what we have done in the past, and that is to transfer on a monthly basis 15% of the education funds into the operations fund.
Okay. I'd like to seek a motion to transfer those funds from education to operations.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it. I have that first.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next one, Mr. Harris.
The next one is tax levy resolution. And what this resolution does is after we approve the budgets tonight, then it goes to the DLGF. They will take a look at it. They are going to cut our tax rate from what we advertise, and then we receive back a final notice from them called a 1782 notice. And what this resolution does is it allows me to make adjustments to the budget once we receive that official 1782 notice. So I would recommend approval of the tax levy resolution.
And I am seeking a motion to approve the tax levy resolution.
I'll do that motion.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we move on to vehicle purchase, Mr. Harris.
Okay, now we're done with the budget and a couple of other items that I'm seeking approval of this evening. The first one is we already had in our capital projects plan for 2021, the purchase of a new truck for the maintenance department, and I am recommending that we purchase from our state buy list through Larkin Greenwood Ford, a new Chevy 250, 2500 HD truck at $42,820.35.
Thank you for that, and I would like to seek a motion to approve this vehicle purchase for the maintenance department.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Say it.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any discussion?
Just glad we're buying local.
Yeah. Thanks. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next we'll move on to the CMS cafeteria project.
This one has been, we've started parts of the project. If you've been over the cafeteria, you've seen parts of it, but this really is what is going to complete this. Back on October the 1st, we received bids through the bid process for equipment in the cafeteria, back in the cooking area, in the kitchen area, as well as tables and other furniture in the student seating area of the cafeteria. And we received one bid from CMT Design and Equipment out of Indianapolis. The total cost of the project will be $575,052.83. This is going to be paid out of a combination of VESR funds and the cafeteria funds. So none of this comes out of our normal operations, those kind of funds. So I would recommend approval of this bid that we received for the middle school cafeteria.
Randy, you have a question? So we only received one bid?
Yes.
And I know sometimes we'll re-bid if we only receive one, right?
We can. We can do what we want, and we had interest from four or five companies, and this again is one of those, I think we're in a different age that every bid that we've sent out, and even trying to solicit, other than the formal bid process, which is over $250,000, there have been other things where we have solicited quotes for equipment for other items between 50 and 150,000. And it has been a rarity that we've received two or three even quotes on different types of items. So it's a different type of economy, different things, and we get the word out in all of the legal proper channels, but I know also between Chartwells and the design group, they tried to push this, and we received the one bid.
And they've worked with this company with...
Yes, they've worked with them. They do come highly recommended, so it's not like, oh, don't know about this. So they were pleased that this company did put in a bid on the project.
I think our kids are going to love the new cafeteria when they see it finished this year.
It's already so much better with the floor that does not slope. It's, and it gives a little bit. It's not quite so difficult to walk on, and as far as keeping it cleaner, there's no comparison with the surface that we have there now. It's, I was there today, and it's just really, really, really nice. And getting the rest of this stuff done is going to be really updating it and getting it to a much more friendly atmosphere, I think, for the kids. Yeah, it's going to be really cool.
All right. I'd like to seek a motion then to approve the CMS cafeteria project.
I so move.
Thanks, Ann. Do I hear a second?
Say it.
Thanks, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go into discussion items and we're gonna talk about the teacher collective bargaining agreement, Mr. Harris.
You have in front of you a kind of a short synopsis here of our teacher collective bargaining agreement. We have reached a tentative agreement with the teachers' union, and I'm just gonna kind of highlight a few things off of it. And even before I do, I want to preface it a little bit, and that is a thank you for the state legislature of increasing the funding towards public education in Indiana. Likewise, our enrollment looks much stronger than what we built our budget off of. So while we've lost a few students from last year, it has been much fewer than what we have incurred in the past. So as we talked about during the budget process, we're getting reimbursement or we're getting money from the state for every student that we have. So all of that has led into what I believe is a real positive contract. I think the teachers' union would agree with that. And I'm just gonna share some of the highlights of it tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. And then we will be back at our November board meeting with the contract and asking for approval of that from the school board. Between now and then, the teachers' union will be voting right after fall break for their ratification meeting of it, and we'll go from there. But some of the highlights from the contract beginning out there. Currently, our salaries range from $39,000 up to $71,000. With the new contract, our base salary is going to increase up to $42,500 for a beginning first-year teacher with a bachelor's degree. It would actually be with a master's degree, it would be $45,650. And then the top end of our contract will increase to $74,000. The other thing that this contract does for us, and for those that have been around for a long time, because of the old way, meaning 12 years or more ago, the old contract method where there were steps and every year teachers got increases until they reached the top. Once the new bargaining laws came in place in 2009, it changed everything. And we also had a recession during that period of time. School budgets were held equal at best or stable, but that resulted in a lot of years where a lot of teachers either received no increases or they received simply a stipend, but their bases stayed the same, so reverted back the next year. All school districts went through that for probably a six to eight-year period. And as a result though of all of that, we have top-end teachers that were in the old method, they got pay increases, we've got younger teachers that did not benefit from the old system. And this new agreement allows us the flexibility to make up for some of those inequities as we agreed to with both the teachers and with the administration in the middle range. So what we're going to see to an individual teacher is a $3,000 across-the-board salary increase, but then individuals within that, the base, the bottom and the top, will see increases that could be anywhere from a dollar up to $4,950, depending on where they are. So this is not, every teacher is not going to receive 2% or every teacher is not going to receive $4,000. It's going to vary from teacher to teacher based on their years, their experience, and all of those kind of things. But hopefully it allows us to make up for some of those inequities as we go forward. The other part of the contract here, some language items, is that we've got a new contract category in there to take care of partial salary contracts. We already have some teachers that are doing partial assignments. That wasn't addressed in the contract, so we've got language to take care of that as we go forward. There is a one-time stipend in there. We have just a very few teachers that are going to be at the cap, that we want to make sure that they also are going to be able to get that minimum raise, and they're going to get stipends above the cap amount for this one year. Also, listening to the teachers, they felt that there should be some changes in the ECA, mainly at the middle school because of higher participation rates in some activities that we provide there. So the contract includes adding one additional seventh and eighth grade baseball coach, adding one additional seventh and eighth grade softball coach. Both of those have had two teams, so assuming the needs there, we want a coach for each of the teams. Tennis program is growing there, so we're looking to add one tennis coach at the seventh and eighth grade level. The other, the next item that we have there is the high school mainly. We just have, there's a lot of events and there's a lot of things, and it takes a lot of bodies. And sometimes even administratively, we can't cover everything what we would like to. So we've added $1,200 in there to be used as a stipend to provide for someone else to cover an event. So there might be a teacher that is asked to cover a freshman boys' basketball game, or somebody might be asked to cover a softball game because there's multiple events. But it puts a stipend amount in there, and the athletic director will be able to pay some people to take care of some of those extra events. The other thing that we have added this year is we have, we've had a new teacher academy for a long time. It came to us that, you know, they do some stuff outside even before the school year starts, and so we've added a $200 stipend there that any teacher that completes the new teacher academy will receive that $200 stipend in June after the completion of that. Another one is we have provided stipends for dual-credit teachers at the high school, and that was an amount of $12,000. We've increased that to $14,000 to be split among all of the teachers that do that at the high school. The other one in this, the teacher retirement contribution, I won't get into all of the details, but right now, in the past, we, the school district, have provided a required 3% match for teacher retirement. That can be paid either by the employee or by the school district. We are shifting that, and the money will shift with it to the teachers. And the reason for that is when you look at our benefits, we are being required by the state of Indiana that they want to see a minimum of 45% of our education funds used for teacher salaries. And when I say for teacher salaries, that's really just the amount. If you ask a teacher how much you make and they say, "I made $45,000", that's all the state counts into that 45%. So they do not count the matches that we make for federal government, they don't make when we provide for valley, health insurance, all of those things. They don't count that money at all. So we've just shifted the money onto the teachers, and that's going to assist us in meeting that 45% requirement from the legislature. And then the last one, we are maintaining the same cost share with health insurance is what we have done in the past. And our health trust has went up 5% this year, so we've made adjustments for our contribution to keep that same match as what we have done in the past. So that's a quick summary of the teacher contract. I'll see if there's any questions about that, but that will be brought back to the board for final vote and ratification at the next board meeting.
This is an amazing accomplishment, and I'm super proud to be serving on the board with this change being made. And, you know, I know we do our best to try to provide for our teachers, and I am glad the state legislature raised, provided more money for teachers. We still have a long way to go, but I think it was a really good start. And one thing I want to point out, this ability to do this, I think the public needs to know, because I know that Mr. Collins has said this on a number of occasions, but I think when it's just said in a meeting without connecting it to something like being able to pay our teachers a minimum of $3,000 more a year and some up to $4,500 a year, people are wondering, how do you have that money? And the reason we have that money, one of the reasons, is being good stewards, which administration has done an incredible job. And I know since Scott's been on board, we have, he has really worked to consolidate positions, to reduce administrative personnel that we just determined, that he just determined, we could, you know, be more efficient. We'd save like a half a million dollars with all the reductions, which is amazing, and that's going back to teachers.
That's every year.
And that's every year, yeah. So I think we have to, we have to let the public know that it's not like we've been hiding money. It's from good stewardship and it's from more efficient management. And I'm just super proud to be a part of a board that has been able to work with administration on this. I wanted to say that, I'm super excited about that.
I'd say it is definitely not one item that has resulted in this.
Right.
It has been both locally and at the state, and all of this added together. From an administrator standpoint, I can tell you by far, this is the largest contracting increase I've ever been part of, and I've done 12 of these now. It feels good to be able to give back to the teachers who definitely deserve it. And we've also taken care of other employees as the years went on.
That's right.
And I think it should be noted that there were a lot of years that teachers got no raise whatsoever, a lot. After 2010, it was pretty miserable for about the last eight years. And it was very difficult for experienced teachers to come in and have the newer teachers make more money, and they were just sort of left out, left out hanging. And this kind of thing, it's not going to make up for all the losses, but I think is going to show our group of teachers that we understand that this was not a good situation, we can't fix it all in one fell swoop, but we're gonna make sure that to the best of our abilities, it's not, that kind of inequity is not going to happen again. And if we're going to keep good teachers, we need to make sure that that kind of inequity does not happen again. So, yeah, fantastic job.
All right, any other comments on that? We will move on to public comments, which are persons wishing to make the board aware, suggestions, ideas, or comments, they can address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. And just for those who had something to say, we limit you to three to five minutes, and it's just an opportunity to comment. So I'll ask Kathryn Hicks to begin. Yes, and please share your name and your, any other?
Address.
Yeah, address.
My address?
Yeah.
My street address?
Yeah. You're fine.
Hi, my name is Kathryn Hicks and my street address is [BLEEP].
Thank you.
And I'm a seventh grader at Connersville Middle School. I've never gotten in any trouble or been in school suspension before you guys voted to put the mask mandate back in place. Now I go to ISS every day. You know what I don't understand? When I go around in town, in Walmart or any other store, I see signs that you have to wear masks, but I never see, but I never have to wear them and only see a few people wearing them. In fact, I haven't had to wear a mask in a really long time, except for at school. Why is that? Why is everyone else playing pretend but we don't get to? I'll tell you why, because we're just kids and can't stand up for ourselves. But actually, we're people too and American citizens. I'm sick and tired of not being able to breathe properly and living my life like this. I'm tired of being this town's guinea pig while adults get to choose for themselves. I can't just go to another school, and I shouldn't have to choose between my education and what I think is healthy for my own body. My mom says being a just ruler means standing up for others when they can't stand up for themselves. Please take a stand for us students' freedom to control our own bodies, thank you.
Thanks, Kathryn, for giving your address, and we just realized and we apologize to you that this really applies for adults about the address. But thank you for giving you, for giving, and it was on the form, so I already knew that, okay. Erica Duncan. And obviously it just said your name, but you can go ahead and say your name. And you are an adult, so you do have to say your address.
Okay, my name is Erica Duncan, I live at 217 South River Road here in Greenville. I come today as a parent of a kid who goes to CMS. And for the last month, a little over a month actually, she has been living in ISS, literally every day. She gets thrown packets and is expected to do work that she isn't taught instruction on. And I have made multiple phone calls to try to get this resolved, even to the extent I don't personally believe in the masks, but to each their own. However, I definitely find it offensive that me as a parent cannot make medical decisions for my own child that has nothing to do with you guys. I find very inappropriate and very off-putting, actually, that you guys can dictate what goes on with my kids' healthcare, and I don't get that, to overrule you on that. You know, my kid is supposed to have the right to a free education, and she's also supposed to be able to get taught by a licensed teacher. And those aren't happening because she's stuck in ISS. Now with that, I've even put the, I've even sent my daughter to school with a mask. However, we don't put it all the way over our face. She'll carry it around, she'll have it hanging from her ears, like I've seen some of you tonight. And nobody has said not one single word. And I feel like it should be respected that same way at the school building, because whether you guys believe that it helps or it doesn't help, it's not your choice to make that medical decision for our kids, it's ours. And at the cost of this, my daughter isn't able to have an education. And with it being this long, this has now affected her mental health, this has affected her social health, and her education. This has highly affected her grades, her ability to complete assignments when she wasn't taught the lesson. And that, I mean, we got to do something as the board, as parents. We have to have an even ground. I don't think the mandate should be in place, however, something needs to happen immediately or I'm going to have to pull my child from public school and come up with an alternative. Because I can't let her continue to live in ISS like prisoners get about that much. You know, and that's just not right, thank you.
Brianna Moore.
Thank you all for giving me your time tonight, my name is Brianna Moore, and I am here on behalf of myself and students of the Connersville schools. I personally believe that these masks are also very captivating for students. There are things that we have to choose whether to wear or not. And if we don't, we get punished, like I have for the past month. I've been put in a small room away from everyone else due to me not complying with what you people want me to wear on my face. I am not willing to argue my health with the school. I'm not willing to be like everyone else and comply with what they want me to wear over my face because I believe that I have the right to an education and I have the right to be who I am and do what I wish with what I want to wear over my face. With, as far as things go with the masks, if I said it were against my religion, I wouldn't have to wear one, would I? Just, well, can you force a child not to wear a pair of glasses if they need them? I don't feel as though I need a mask to keep myself safe. If students want to wear one, I would like to say go ahead and do what you wish. But I feel like those of us who don't want to wear one shouldn't have to, and those of us who feel as though it is making us have a lesser education than what we deserve, I feel as though we should be equal to the other students in getting an education, even if that means sitting in the back of our classroom and listening to the lesson. Because my grades have been affected majorly because I'm just being thrown packets and work and told to do it. I asked for help and only a few teachers have responded. And personally, everyone works differently. And personally, I work better with seeing someone else do it first and me trying to do it myself. I don't get that, living in ISS for an entire month. But I feel like if students got the choice to wear a mask or not, I feel as though more children would be putting forth the effort in working on schoolwork and wouldn't have to be afraid that if they didn't comply, that they would be sent and be punished for being independent, thank you.
Joe Sloan.
Hi, my name is Joe Sloan, I live in 2228 East Little Bear Road. From listening to these kids, it sounds like it's kind of like Australia in the school, but this school board has done some great things. But this school board has done some great things, but continuing to do this mask mandate is not one of them. When this mandate was implemented, there was a school board member that said they had no idea how many particulates the mask really did filter out, but still voted to mask our children. Another school board member was saying how important facial expression was for interaction, but still voted for the mandate. Our children need their freedom back. I've heard school board members talk about how they worry about the kids passing it to a loved one at home. Have you been to Walmart or Kroger's or, I mean, there's hardly any mask anywhere when you go out in public. I believe if you're going to continue the mask mandate, you should print out all of your medical references that you have made your decision off of for all of us parents, because it really just seems like you don't want to do the contact tracing. But you really should. Giving people options to do what is best for them is freedom. COVID is here, you can't wear a mask forever. What's next? Mandatory vaccinations? You need to stop this mandate. Thank you.
Kevin Sturley.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Kevin Sturley. I live at 1305 Indiana here in town. First, I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Reason why I'm here, I would like to discuss with you the junior high south building. I'm not going to talk about mask mandates. I am aware that the building no longer has any value to the school corporation. And it's slated to be raised. I understand that. I've previously spoken with a few board members individually, as well as Mr. Harris, but wanted to make the entire board aware, I'm very interested in possibly purchasing the building. While, like I said, the building no longer has any value to the school corporation, it does have significant value, economic value, as it is. I know there's issues with it. I understand that. I don't think my interest until right now has been made, made known to the entire board. Like I said, I've spoken with a couple, a few board members and I spoke with Mr. Harris. He told me he wasn't going to bring it up at the meeting, so I assumed it wasn't that meeting. And I watched the meeting and it wasn't brought up. There's a lot of different things you can do with that building. I keep being told that, well, you have to present your, what do you want to do with it? Make a plan? Well, I have a partner. And we've discussed many, many things about that building for a number of years. Not just, this isn't just new. For example, I mean, you can have, in larger cities, I know like Indianapolis for example, there's incubator space. So you want to start your own accounting business, or you want to start your own tailoring service or whatever, and you don't have the necessary space to start your business. Well, I've seen one in Indianapolis where there's this big warehouse, like an open, like an open, one of the old factory buildings, like a Visteon or Ford or whatever, where you have, there's sheds, a storage shed, like an outdoor storage shed, like a barn. And it's yours. You, you rent it or you buy it, I forget whether you rented it or buy, I think you rented. You rent space. They put it there. You decorate however you want to do it for your building, whatever it may be. And you, there's a shared, like let's say a common area with all the technology stuff, like a fax or a copy machine, or there's a little area where there's, all the vendors can get together and have like a coffee hour or whatever, I don't know, while they're meeting a client. But then at the end of the day, you have your little space. Well, you could do the same thing with that building. I mean, there's plenty of spaces in there to rent out. I would, you could, you could do things and where you are tailoring them, leave it open. And then you say, well, I want, I'm interested in making it look this way. Or I want two rooms or three rooms or whatever, you know, whatever your business is. Some people think that you can't do anything with an old school building. Well, I beg to differ because I know, I know the owner of the, the one who owns the old Waterloo school building. He is a, he has a company. He manufactures speaker boxes. He sells them all over the world. I've been in the building and he has converted the whole thing. He has three table saws lined up here. He has a shipping place down here. He has a upholstery place over here and then parts of the, parts of the building that are being used. He has his offices up front. He has a place to box his materials up and ship out and a place upstairs to store all the materials. So there's all things you can do with an old school building. And I understand it doesn't serve the purpose, the school corporation, I'm not arguing that fact. The school corporation is not in any business of being a landlord. I get it. At the time, you had East Central, I believe, and Resource Center in there. They've, whether, for whatever reason, they're not there anymore. And I understand, it no longer serves a purpose for you anymore. But there's like storage spaces, a small manufacturing place with that bay door on the, on the north end. There's a dock door, a dock and a bay door. You can have, make your widgets over here and run down here and ship them over here and open the bay door and your supplies come in and your raw, your completed projects go out. I mean, you can, there's all kinds of things you can do with that. I'm obviously, not even mentioning the gym. The gym is still usable. We all know there is not enough space in Connersville for teams to practice, whether they be high school, junior high, the elementary schools or middle school, or the, the elementary schools, or even the adult intramural stuff. I mean, I know I hear the police use the building for practicing tactical stuff. I mean, you know. Two large tenants have actually called me. They heard I owned something and they wanted, I said, well, I have a space that I'm, hopefully, I didn't mention where, I just said, I hope I get it someday, maybe, we'll see. They want, and they'd be perfect for there. They need about, let's say, the, probably the amount of size that I would bet the Resource Center had, I think. That side on the first floor, I think, was all they had. I don't remember. But I said, I don't know anything yet, just, I'll call you when I know something. The other thing, it's, it's something positive for the community, rather than tear it down, spend $269,000 plus thousand of taxpayers' money. The, the ground in front, since I've been a little kid, has always, 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 always looked like that. It either is, it either is real high and like the clover buckorns everywhere, or they scalp it and blow it all out the side of the mower and it sits there. Either way, it's looked like an eyesore ever since I've been a little kid. I have, we were talking about middle school tennis, I think you said, hiring a coach for them. I know two members of the junior high, the middle, middle school tennis team. And I thought, I had thought of and talked to my partner about it. And the front of that lot, it's just grass space. Well, I see vision, and I'm not going to say everything, but I see vision of, of, you could, you could make that into a park-type setting with a fountain or something. And, and you have two tennis courts right in that space. That's fenced around there, lighting. Now, it could be open for the public, for the public. So you're walking by and you want to play tennis with your wife on Sunday afternoon, you play. And then, well, I spoke with someone in the maintenance department here and they said, well, that won't work because then the tennis team will never get to play. Well, you could put a sign on that says, it's reserved during these hours for the middle school tennis team. So they could walk right down the street, a block, and practice or have meets right on their own, their own tennis courts that are right there. And they don't have to fight for the, because you know, the high school's busy with the, the girls and the boys' teams during the same time, I think. I don't know the schedule, but I mean, so I'm sure there's overlap.
Kathryn, can you kind of wind up?
I will. I will. I know there's, they want a soccer field there. They tear down for a soccer field, Mr. Drew told me. There's a soccer field over Maplewood that isn't being used. I've, I've kind of been told that I have to have a plan and they want to see my finances before. I'm not going to say everything about my plan because I don't want to spill the beans with what things I want to, my partner and I want to do with it. I'm just kind of wondering to know if there's, I know it's been slated for raising or to be torn down. I know there's budgeted money. I know it's been approved for budgeted money, but it hasn't been torn down yet. It, I don't believe the language in the statute states that if you don't have to purchase it for this price, if you don't make this price, then it has to be, we can't meet it. That's not how the language in the statute reads, I don't think. If you look at it closer, I believe as long as you board members think, yes, we vote on it, we think it's a good, a good plan, whatever, or for whatever, whatever reason, as long as you unanimously, or you know, agree, majority of you agree, I think it can be, if you look at the statute, clear. So I just wanted to know if, if there's anything you can do to entertain, to pursue buying it or investing in it, rather than, than just tearing it down to have another grassy area where we might put a soccer field. That's all I was wanting to know. So I hope to hear back from you some later. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we thank everybody for their comments this evening. And we will move on now to report items. Superintendent Discussion Group reports. Don't think we have any Principal Director reports. Anybody? Nope. Saying no. Director of Operations report.
Hey, you haven't heard enough from me tonight. Just a couple things. You have the fund report. We're still in good shape there. One other one though, that I did want to tell you, I just notified yesterday, a little bit of a change from the federal government. Next week during fall break, for the last year, the school lunch program has allowed us to provide meals for students even when we have been on vacation. The end of September ended that program and we will not be able to provide any meals next week. Question came to me, could we buy the meals and do it, you know, through our cafeteria funds? And the answer to that is no, if there's any federal funds involved at all, they will not allow us to do that. So we've tried to go around, but we've been pretty well told no at each step. But I just wanted to bring that one up. And I know Rachel and Chartwell's would like to be able to, but we're not allowed to, so.
Randy, how well have, how well has that, how many meals have actually been given out to last few breaks?
I couldn't tell you. I mean, usually we give reports on that and I could, I'd be more than happy to come back in November and tell you that. And it varies from the break to break and different things. Like during summer school, we gave out more because students were, you know, physically around and we were able to do it. And the rest of the summer, there's good, there's good weeks and there's bad weeks. And it varied from break to break. But I could get those numbers for you.
Well, one of the concerns, I think it was fall break, and I can't even remember when it was, that there just, there just wasn't the usage there. They just didn't have, they had the food there, but they just didn't have the kids for it. They had, would have four or five, four or five kids show up at, at the venue, so.
That's been the case pre-COVID. We were only getting a handful of kids.
Yeah.
And some of them were the employees' kids who came along with them.
So although I don't like it, it, it might not have the impact that we think it was if, if, if in fact, not that many families were actually using it, so.
I know what you're reading.
All right. Well, thank you, Randy. Assistant Superintendent Report. Kim.
I just want to compliment Will Spartan preschool and all the teachers there. And if you get an opportunity to go over there and visit, it's a wonderful place. And it's just so encouraging to see all those little people working together. So I just want to thank them and the teachers for all that they do for kids.
Superintendent's Report. Scott.
This was here, we had a conference this past, last week for the School Board Association and the Superintendent Association. So it's always good to get to hear what other districts are doing out there creatively. I will tell you that, you know, I think the, there's a lot of concerns out there with funding and talking to a lot of different superintendents. The two-year funding piece that, that was approved, worry with, will that continue and sustain itself in the next, and there's not a lot of optimism out there in the education world that that will, but we're optimistic that we will. But I just want to, you know, commend our negotiations team with the teachers. It was really, really good. We had some really good decisions made, I think, and we're really trying to fix some of those teachers who fell into that. I mean, it's been, we're going to do some really good things here and we can't afford this and sustain this, or we wouldn't be doing this, so. So I appreciate the group there, the good collaboration we have.
Okay, for the good of the cause.
I'd kind of like to comment on the school board conference that we went to. One of the things that, and one of the sessions that I attended that was really interesting was that everybody in the state of Indiana is struggling with the same kinds of issues. Whether you live in, we, there was a superintendent from Michigan City, there was one from Wabash, somebody from Noblesville, somebody from Floyd Central. They're all dealing with the same kinds of issues. It's, it's beyond socio-economic things of the, of their particular school district. Everyone is dealing on, on how we adapt and how we do the best for our kids in the new normal, what we have today. And it was encouraging to hear some other people's ideas on what they were doing that we can bring back here, some of the things that we were doing, other people were impressed with. But I think that this was, this is a boat that, that everyone in the state of Indiana who cares about kids is in. And I think everyone is endeavoring to do the best they can do under very difficult situations for their, the needs, to meet the needs of the kids in their school systems. And it's a, it's a daunting task, whether you are on the shores of Lake Michigan or the, or on the Ohio River or anyplace in between. Everyone, every school district is struggling to, to make the adaptations. And we are so fortunate that we have, financially, we're in very, very good shape to do some of these things for our kids, where other school systems simply do not have that. And so we are very, very fortunate. Came away, it was a great conference. We came away with a lot of interesting ideas and just, just the camaraderie of, of the people of the state of Indiana that are dedicated to making things better for the kids. It was really great.
I just wanted to say I'm grateful that, beginning next week, we're going to start at Everton School to get ready for the new indoor library. So that starts, some of the construction starts over fall break, so I'm happy for that. I also wanted to acknowledge two longtime staff members. Mike Quorum, who was custodian, or is, but was, was custodian of Frazee. And I don't know how many years he had. Does anybody remember? A lot. And Mary Congleton, who's been a head start nurse for forever.
Ever.
Ever.
Ever, ever.
That's how the, yeah. So I know those are both some of our long, long-term retirees from FCSE. And so we're very grateful for their, for all they've given us, so. Anybody have anything else to add?
Madam President, I'd just like to thank, I love seeing democracy at work, that the parents can come, the students can come with concerns that they do have. And I want to let the community know that our children, our parents, it took a lot of courage for the kids to get up there, well, never be looked at as domestic terrorists. And, and that, you know, I just love to see democracy like this, you know.
Thank you.
It's all in, in, you know, and to have an opportunity to speak out. I love it. That's why I love this board.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris.
I agree.
And thank you as parents out there.
Okay. Chris.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sure.
Thank you, Dennis. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, hold the same sign, meaning adjourn.